With that, to make it clear, we'll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One?
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two? Mr. Herron, District Three?
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four?
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five?
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six?
Here.
Ms. Addington, at large?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a forum. Next item is to approve the agenda. Is there anything we need to add or delete, Mr. Holmes?
We need to add item 12B, the local choice insurance renewal.
Any other additions?
That's the only one I have.
Not in a plan of motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do we have a motion?
No move.
You've made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wood, second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Propose. Motion carried. Next item, approve the amendments from February the eighth, two thousand twenty-three. If you had a chance to look at those, I ask for a motion to approve the amendments as presented to you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bricky, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Propose. Motion carried. Next item is the cease and cession period, and we have a couple of things we're going to do during that, but we can start. I'll read this little short statement. We'll go into that, and we do have something to do with it. We get into cease and cession. So I'll read this short statement. It says, "The cession period is upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county and or organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, and we do have a couple of things we're going to do in that, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns, take your business, and any action will be considered after we close cease and cession." So with that, we are in cease and cession period. With that, I'll ask the group to come. Mac McClung, if you would, come to the podium, please. Scotty has something. Mr. Vic Romiyan has something he wants to say about what we're fixing to do, so if you would. Hello, ma'am.
Good morning.
I know you all busy working and stuff, but we got you coming to do this, so. Scotty, if you will. Oh, Scotty, Mr. Scotty, I've known you too long. Mr. Vic Romiyan, but anyway.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting us speak on the, obviously, on behalf of Mac. But in March of two thousand thirteen, in the back hall of the Siegel Center in Richmond after losing in the state championship game for my third time, I was stopped as I was leaving the locker room by a little seventh grader about this tall, who looked me in the eye and said, "Coach, when I get the varsity, I'm going to win you that state championship. I promise." Now, my thoughts were, that was cute. Little big fella. But I had to, I don't wear this ring ever hardly. We was talking about that, but for today, we wore the rings, didn't we? So he did that. As a freshman, Mac getting started his first game, he came off the bench, scored seventeen, and so Mac started ever since. He probably deserved to start, but I was a little old school and had freshmen, and I had a bunch of seniors. But I remember telling him before the game, I'm not going to start you tonight. I'm going to start one of our seniors. And I could just see the look in his eye, you know. He had set that as a goal for himself, I'm sure, but he took that and ran with it. As a sophomore, he grew, and he shined. When he caught that alley-oop against Martinsville in the, I think it was the region final game and dunked it backwards, everybody started to notice. Obviously, we had seen it, but everybody else in the region and area started to notice. Mac went on to dominate 2A in Virginia in his junior and senior years, scoring sixty-four points in one game against Dan River. He broke Allen Iverson's single-season tally by finishing with eleven hundred and fifty-three points in a single season. He broke the state scoring record with a career two thousand eight hundred and one points. He also broke the state championship scoring record that J.J. Reddick had set by scoring forty-seven points and leading our team to its first state championship. Mac went on to do great things at Georgetown and Texas Tech before starting his professional career in the G League and now the NBA. And in his second professional season, he's been electrifying. You've got to watch him. He can score against the best defenders, and he's growing in all the aspects of the game other than scoring. And we're certainly proud of that. He's leading his team to victory. Some things that I want to say about Mac that stand out, wherever he goes, he wins in whatever thing that he's playing, whether he's arguing over a bowl of cereal or whether he's playing basketball against the greatest. One time in practice, I don't know if you remember, but he told us he was making some stuff going on. He started talking about LeBron James and how he couldn't guard him, and we thought that, too, was cute. You know, that's cute. He was a freshman or sophomore at that time, and I'm sure he followed that up with, just wait and see, you know. That's kind of being who he is. Wherever he goes, he wins. Whatever he decides to do, he does. I've coached a bunch of young men over the last twenty-five years, and I'm super proud of all of them. This is one here. Mac has certainly made this guy proud, too, and to say I'm surprised at anything he's doing, I'm not. We're not surprised. We saw it from an early age, and it was a gift, and we sow seeds, you know, and it's what we do as educators and coaches, and we hope those seeds produce fruit. Certainly, with Mac, it has, and it's something that he is now giving away. We give gifts, and we give our gifts away. And so I'll give you two more stories about Mac, and I think it's important that you understand who he is. And I know he's honored for what you're doing today, but when he was a young boy, he went to a camp. It was a football camp, and there were some superstars there from the area. I won't identify their names. But he was in line to get an autograph, and they just drew the line and said, "We're done." And he didn't get the autograph, and he remembers how that felt. And so one of the things he told me as when we were getting into that part of the season as a senior, that at any time, if there's a kid waiting, he's going to sign there. You don't want him to feel like he's done. So it tells you a little bit about his heart. Again, we're very proud of him. Mac loves Gay City, as you could tell. When he put the jersey on, he sent me a text about three weeks ago, and it was random. It was just out of the blue and said, "Coach, I've been here, 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 and here," and he said, "My most treasured moments were in Gay City." And so that touched anything, you know. It touched my heart that he had spent the time. So evidently, he'd come to a good place that night and decided to pour that back out on me, and that was nice. It was a timely text, too. Winning the NBA Slam Dunk Contest was awesome, but doing it in a Gay City jersey, that was kind of epic for us. It tells a lot about his heart. A lot of people were surprised that night, as you saw on the sideline, but none of us were. We'd seen him do that stuff before, but I think he could probably jump over a truck if he wanted to. That's kind of how that works. But we're very proud of Mac, and we love him, and again, really proud of the man he's becoming and the things that he values and how he's always given back to us in many ways. So thank you for what you're doing, and I know he's grateful. He's got to get him this morning, so I'd say he's warming up here in a few minutes. Again, thank you. Thanks to the board.
Well, I want to read this resolution that we're doing, and was it March the ninth, I think you said, that's when?
It was March ninth, two thousand.
Yeah, and so we didn't include that in the resolution, but anyway, so people know, you know, next Thursday would be the anniversary of that. But it all reads into the record. It's not very long, but it's very appropriate, I think, for what was accomplished, you as the coach. And by the way, I used to be, sit behind him when he was coaching Twin Springs, and he didn't know if we were cheerleaders, if we were referees, if we were coaches. He didn't, he didn't know what we were. And anyway, we trained him. He went on to Gay City and become great, you know, so he got his own training. I thought I did, yeah, so. Anyway, this resolution here, I think, very appropriate. Says, "Whereas Mac McClung was raised in Scott County, graduated from Gay City High School in two thousand eighteen, and whereas Mac McClung received a basketball scholarship at Georgetown University in eighteen and two thousand twenty and Texas Tech in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and whereas Mac McClung received the NBA G League Rookie of the Year in two thousand twenty-two, and whereas Mac McClung received the honor of winning the NBA Slam Dunk Contest on February the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas there are no appropriate words to adequately congratulate him on such an incredible performance and how proud he has made the citizens of Scott County, and therefore, it be proclaimed by the Scott County Board of Supervisors that because of his, of the unparalleled dedication to the game of basketball to Scott County, that we recognize your great accomplishment." So his mom and dad is here to receive this. Everyone that signs, I'm going to present this to mom and dad, and so. Anyway, I'm glad Marcus, you're working Scott County today. While talking to him today, he was having a little Lee County, and so I said, well, he said, "Course starts at eight-thirty," and, well, you can work it out, so we get you there pretty quickly. I don't have to wait too long. So with this, I would want to present this to you, and congratulations. And somebody get a photo. Somebody get a picture of us saying this. Turn around so we can see the camera right here, and so. You ever phone free to you? Somebody get a, these leases here, but somebody. And I asked Mike Bricky, Mike was principal of Gay City, he said, "Well, it'd be more appropriate than the chairman to do this." So anyway, congratulations, y'all. Y'all got to sign. I know you're proud of, so we're all proud. I was going to put a jersey. If I had a jersey, I said, "If he can do it on national TV, put a Gay City jersey on." I should have one here, but I don't. He didn't bring the one, so I didn't get it, but I'm going to put it on right here. All right.
You can order one.
I know, I've heard of that, but anyway.
Just sit to the right.
Mom and dad, go ahead.
I'd like to thank you all very much. As parents of Mac, we are so proud of him. We're so proud of, I feel like everybody's adopted him from this area, you know. Even people in other counties who were yelled at in two thousand eighteen, you know, for him now, and we're proud of Mac for a lot of reasons, but you can honestly say he's never forgot where he's come from.
He's not.
He's always held Gay City up, and I'm so proud. And he wanted me to tell you thank you so much for this. He is actually warming up. So for some reason, they play at eleven o'clock today, and that's the, I think they played like twice in the history of it, they played this time, but we wanted to tell you all thank you and how sincerely grateful he is.
All right. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, anyone wishing to speak? We have no one that's signed up anymore. Just Mac McClung. Is that a hard act to follow?
You got that right.
All right, go ahead, second lady. We know, but go ahead.
I'm Peggy Tyson. I'm from Snowflake Road, Gay City, Virginia. And I don't know if we're to start first, but I'm going to make it kind of short. I won't go over all this. But I had, my husband had written some letters to Kane Warner. They're the only ones that we've got letters back from. And I called Terry Kilgore's number, but I got to hold the secretary to the secretary, and she was supposed to pass on, but she hadn't got back with me on the information that I got from these letters from Kane. Kane said that this was a federal matter. Let's see, this issue, this issue you raised is not a federal matter, but one addressed at the state level. But Warner, he said that this America's Infrastructure Act, the bill, is going to be providing seven billion dollars in Virginia for road and bridge repairs. Have you all heard anything on that level?
I've heard about the bill, but how much to allocate, I have not.
Seven billion over the next five years.
Good, yeah.
So, and that's where Terry and I guess you guys will probably get some come down this way instead of it all going to. Up to Terry. I'll still keep calling. And the road conditions on Snowflake Road since the rain. You know, I mean, it's, ain't no need to go on there. It's just, it's just worth.
And when you're watching out tomorrow, it's supposed to be maybe two or three inches of rain next two or three days, so it's going to be even worse probably next few days. It's going to rain a lot.
Well, we've called, you know, about gravel and scraping, but all they give us is a ticket number. I don't know how many ticket numbers I've got, but they ain't never, you know, but they don't work. The ticket numbers don't work. And the six-year plan, I hope they do away with it, but Jeremy, I hope we can keep Snowflake Road maybe at the top of the six-year plan. And Shirley just wanted to talk to you about some trees that was cut, and that's all I have today, but any help that you can give us on Snowflake Road, and I'll see you all next month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Shirley Taylor, Snowflake Road, Gay City. And I'm here to, I guess, give a little praise to VDOT. We don't know the bus a lot of times, but in this case, there was three large trees across the road in front of my house, and they were swaying large trees, and I feared every time the wind blew that they were coming toward me, and of course, the buses and other traffic as well. But anyway, Jeff Campbell and Jeff Wilson of the Fort Blackmore headquarters, the eight-hundred number of folks, call them, and anyway, they came by. And of course, they said it would have to be turned over to the roadside contractors, and which in turn it was Brandon Elkins, and last, let's see, the seventeenth of February, they were cut. I was shocked.
Good.
But anyway, these contractors, their name is T.E.L.O.S., Talos Enterprises, and of course, their information is online, and they've done a super job and quick. I mean, they were very impressive. And my thought was, you know, since there's not many workers for VDOT, and if they can get these contractors, especially now, to get the curves and the places on Snowflake Road and all roads, unpaved roads in Scott County, that need to be trees cut in the curves till you can see, these people I would highly recommend. And I just want to say a positive note for VDOT because these guys did come by and look at them and did good in getting this done. And I'm like, "Peg, we're on a mission to get a road fixed there in Snowflake, and maybe we'll build an all unpaved roads in Scott County." So that's our mission.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you, Karen.
Have a good day.
Anyone else wishing to speak during this expression? Good morning.
Good morning. Hello again. My name is Sharon Nelson. I live off of Uzi Creek. Marshall is our district commissioner, and I'm here as a follow-up report. Back in July and August, I was here to talk about Convention of States, and I felt that it would be important to give you a report on what happened as a result of that effort, which we do every year. So for those of, just as a brief intro, Article Five of our Constitution has two clauses. Clause one allows Congress to make amendments to our Constitution, which they have done a few times in our history. Clause two allows the states and their people to propose amendments to the Constitution. That has never been done. We, Convention of States organization, has been in operation for fourteen years, and you need to have thirty-four states approve a resolution before we can call a Convention of States. We have nineteen. Virginia and two other states, Montana and Wyoming, are the first three states in any given year that holds their legislative session. So we were one of the first on the docket. So as a result of when I came to speak with you before in August, and thank you very much, up until the legislative session began in the middle part of January, our team was very active in speaking with Delegate Kilgore, Delegate O'Quinn, Senator Pillion, and attempted with Senator Hackworth. I'm district captain for the Southwest Virginia region. As a result of three of those meetings, we got, they said they would vote yes when the resolution would come to the floor, which was awesome. Hackworth was a little bit more difficult, but he ended up being a great supporter while there during the legislative session. So we made phone calls. We wrote letters. We had different blitz campaigns, all different things to educate not only the citizens of this area, but also our legislators about Convention of States. And the three items on the resolution, as a reminder, are term limits for our federal officials, a federal balanced budget, and then to look at the powers given to the president on where there's overreach happening. So we call that overreach of the federal government. Those are the three items on every resolution in every state that has to be approved. So we prefiled, and we had a sponsor. So these are the steps of a resolution. It's different than a bill, which you probably know. You just had, you just did a resolution, which was awesome. So first, you have to secure sponsors for the resolution. Then you have to file it. Then you have to get it assigned to a committee. This is during the legislative session. Then it has to pass in committees in both the House and the state, and sometimes there are subcommittees that it has to go through first, and then it has to pass on the floor in both chambers before it becomes a passed resolution in the state. Not an easy task. That's why our Congress doesn't do this. Okay, so we filed, we actually filed in the Senate in January, and on the twentieth of January, it was assigned to the Privileges and Elections Committee. That's what they call it in the Senate. And they voted nine yes and five nay to pass it indefinitely, which means they table it, okay? It wasn't dead yet. That was just the Senate. So we knew that this whole thing would be kind of a challenge because the makeup had not changed from the previous year where it didn't pass either. It is a, even though we're nonpartisan, we're Americans, we're patriots, the Democrats still held the Senate twenty-two to eighteen. So we knew we were up for a challenge, but that doesn't mean that we wouldn't go forward to work this every year because it does two things. It makes everybody aware of Convention of States, not only in the legislative, our state, but also our local and the citizens. So there's a real value to do this every year, even though we know that it's going to be a tough road to get it passed through a Democrat stronghold. That being said. So now on the House side, oh, I should say, this was a big thing. We had Senator Pete was our sponsor for the Senate resolution, and we had ten-plus other senators that supported it. So it was very strong, even though in the Senate. On the House side, we filed with Karen Greenhall. She's from Virginia Beach. She was a sponsor, and we had over sixteen cosponsors to the House bill. It went to the House Rules Committee, and they voted yes, ten, five nay, to move it forward. And interestingly, Kilgore and O'Quinn were not present. They were the only two not present during that vote. We haven't approached him yet on their reasoning why they decided it not to be in that committee meeting, but they worked. From there, we had to go, and I should say, during that House Rules Committee where they were, we had five hundred people that could write in a comment, so we had five hundred citizens write in in support, which was amazing. And that committee gets to see all of those. There were ten that opposed, so just to say it's open for both sides to put in comments. We also had Mr. Rick Santorum speak on behalf of COS National. So we had great people that were speaking in support, and then we also had opposition. We always do. They're usually the constitutional conservatives is one group. We also have a group called Common Cause. They're funded by Soros, and they're very active. We found out later that at the last minute, they put out a campaign, and they have money. They put out a very professional, short videos on why to oppose it, and they're all arguments they play out every single year. So we do anticipate them, yet they have a force behind them that they can come in at the last minute and put something out there to try and sway people that even have said, our legislators have even said that they would vote for it. So it's quite an interesting little thing we've got going on here. So, okay, so now it, the House passed. So now because of that, it has to go back over to the Senate. So that's what happened on February the third, and at that point, Margaret Ranson, she's from District Ninety-nine, and she is in support, came up and made the recommendation to put it back into the Privileges and Elections Committee. And by vote, it was agreed upon, so it went back over to the Senate side, and that's where it died. And this is basically how it happened last year as well. So as a result, just in summary, COS, Convention of States, only had forty-five legislators who said they would vote yes. We had forty-eight. We had Republicans of fifty-two in the House. So you would think that we would be able to go through with this fairly easily. We did not. We had seven that were opposed. We worked very hard every day. There were people there from Convention of States, speaking to all the legislators, constituents there, meeting with them, handing out information, dealing with any of their oppositions or concerns. They were on it. And we still had seven Republicans, and I have the list. If you're interested later, they, even our people, Kilgore, O'Quinn, Pillion, knew who these people were. They're vehemently opposed. They are opposed to COS. And we could not sway, and we needed to do that. We had eight we needed to flip in the House, nine in the Senate for this to go through. And we had a strategy, and they worked it, but we knew it was going to be a tough hill up. So we just didn't have enough in either chamber to support Article Five. So what does that mean right now? Right now, we have five-point-four million Americans that have signed the petition. Kansas, North Carolina, Maryland, Indiana, Rhode Island are all next on the docket to have legislative sessions, and they all have, they're doing the same thing that we did. I'll just say that Montana, us, Montana and Wyoming, the first three, they all didn't pass because of the opposition. They did the same thing to them. They were almost through it. They had a better chance of passing it than us, and it was cut right down. North Dakota, they put in a resolution to rescind it, which means they had passed it and they wanted to take it out, and those people rallied, and it did not, it was not rescinded. So we are getting, they are trying hard now because they see that we're out there in big numbers and not going away, that they're starting to pose opposition on the states that have already passed. So now we're going into an election year. So the strategy is, is that we know, because they didn't hide it, who are opposed, and we are putting up people that are running against those who are vehemently opposed to the Convention of States in those districts, and they're all up above us. So our goal was to exceed the results of the prior year resolution with the same General Assembly. So it had not changed the makeup, as we know. So we picked up a few legislators and some new Convention of States leaders, which is awesome, and they added to our information on how to move forward. It's always good to know how to adjust your, we call it a battle book. So we did not have enough legislators in either chamber to support Article Five, but this session proved that even with supposedly a conservative House chamber, it does not matter which party they're in. They want to keep the status quo. We need to flip those legislators who are anti-Convention of States and those who want to save our Constitution. So that's where we're at. We have work ahead of us. We're not going away. And I so am thankful for your support and opportunity always to come in to report to you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak during this expression? Yes, ma'am.
I have a copy of what I'm going to be speaking about.
Section nine, section nine, do you want?
Otis Bowen, Powell District. Ms. Hood's unrepresented.
Okay, Mr. Bowen.
I have a handout on what I'm going to be speaking about. If you'd like one?
Sure, hand it up. We get to Darrell here, then he'll pass it around.
Darrell, I don't know if there's enough there or not, but I've got more.
Just perfect, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. I've never done this before, but I'm very concerned about what this paper's saying. And also, I hadn't called the VDOT number to talk to someone about it. And I was given a number. It was in Lee County. And the gentleman there in Lee County over in that district called me and he said it's out of his hands. I need to speak to somebody in Scott County. So, I did recall and the Pattonsville District Headquarters called me. We discussed this situation. And he said there was nothing he could do directly. And the concern here is for not just myself, but for every citizen that comes across Powell Mountain from Sticklville to Duffield, from Lee County, Cumberland Gap area, across the mountain. They completed, most recently, and just completed about a year ago now. And I've got a rough drawing here. You may not understand anything about it, but I'll try to go through that. But I did call VDOT and I was given that information. On the drawing there, you can see I've got Highway 42158. This crosses from Duffield into Lee County and from Lee County into Duffield. And Virginia Department of Highway put in a passing lane coming out of Lee County to the top of Powell Mountain. And I live about 726, our state route, 726 to the right side. And so, the concern that I have is when you're coming out of Lee County, you can see there's a passing lane. It comes up and it goes back into the two lane coming on toward Duffield and Pattonsville. Then there's an outside lane. And in it, I've drawn the arrows and all that goes back to two lanes. And we're up there on the top and we have to turn right if we're coming out of Lee County. So, we have nowhere to turn. We're on the road turning and people are coming by blowing their horn, shaking their fist at you. My neighbor who rents our mother's old house property, she said a truck nicked her mirror a couple of weeks ago. She was trying to get off the road to turn to ride on 726. And my concern is there's no traffic turn lane for us to get in. We have to go off the shoulder to get over on 726. When they put the new road through there and cut all that through in 1968, 69 and 70, they did not make a turn lane. There's still not a turn lane. And I spoke to the contractor. Greg asked us when they were putting the road in and putting the turn lane in and getting rid of paving. And I said, are we not going to get a turn lane this time? He said, it's not in the plan. So, VDOT didn't put it in the plan and he could not put it in the plan, of course. And I understand that. I'm not blaming him. But I'm just concerned about the danger of this to our citizens and myself as well. I have a brother-in-law who has his property in Lee County. He goes every day over there to feed and check on the farm and the animals. He comes to there every day and makes that turn. He says he finds the same situation that it's not safe to get off. And when we turn right, we're sitting in that lane where the traffic's coming from Lee County. And I guess they're wondering what we're doing in that lane. But we have nowhere else to go except to go over in the gravel to the right side to get off the road. And 726, you can see, I've got it to the right there. Not a good drawing, but it would help you understand.
I understand. That's good.
But 726 is a road that's older than I am. I'll be 75 next month. And this is what they do for that road and I'm speaking the truth, best I know it. I've driven the bus through there. One of our board of supervisors has driven the bus through there for years. And they come and put gravel on the road, they scrape the road, put gravel on the road. They never cleaned the ditch line. There's two ditches cut in the first tile coming down the mountain on 726. And it's got gullies in the road right now. You could drive over and see it. So, they don't clean the ditch line, but they scrape the road religiously and put gravel on it. And it needs to be more than just scraping that road. And I'm just bringing that issue in with this. But those are my concerns, not just for myself.
I understand.
I'm not trying to be selfish. It doesn't help me as much as it will help other people, mainly to make them safe. And that's my concern. Thank you all.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. I can attest to what he says. I traveled that road. And one time, there was a car headed toward me head-on, passing on the double line. I had to get off the road to keep from getting hit. And that is common on that road. That is a very dangerous road. And it does need a passing lane going up the mountain from the Duffield side.
The VDOT folks are here and I'll give them a copy of this unless you have an extra copy. Do we have an extra one to give to them? I'll give them an extra.
I have an extra.
Okay. All right. And then, well, they'll be here in a few minutes. But if you want to give it to them, I'll give it to them when they come. If you want to bring it to them, then when they come, I'll present it to them. Appreciate that. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll come out and sit and press. We've got one item to vote on as the resolution. We prompted them while they were here. We do need to approve the resolution as read in the record. We didn't give them a copy of it, so we'll do that. So, we need a motion to approve the resolution as we present it to the McClum family. Do we have a motion?
So am I, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is that a second? Any discussion? The folks saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So, that's the only action we need to take from that. And so, you know, a lot of VDOT stuff here, they're here to, you know, to talk about some of this stuff. And then, Ms. Nelson, when she left, we definitely appreciate her work on this Convention of States. It's something they've been working on real hard and trying to get it through with 19 states and they need 34, so I'm glad she came. All right. With that, the next item is a public hearing on a special use permit application submitted by Dean Ferguson for the property at the intersection of US 23 North and Parker Drive, tax map number 100A4 to be used as a mini warehouse, if you want to come to get one.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Mr. Ferguson, to give you a little background, this was being brought up for a special use permit before the Planning Commission backed probably four or five months ago. And the owner at that time of the property was working with a realtor and they decided that they didn't want to continue with a special use permit for the one, one tax map number. So, right before the Planning Commission, they decided to withdraw it. And I was driving, as I do, down to Duffield and came on. Mr. Ferguson was down there proceeding to build a storage unit out of, of truck.
Conix.
What's that?
Conix.
Conixes, yeah. And so, I stopped and talked to him. And he had been told by the previous owner that the special use permit had been approved. Well, come to find out, it had been withdrawn and hadn't been even presented to the Planning Commission. So, he, I told him that he can't do any more work. Go ahead and store the containers there, but he couldn't arrange them or do any kind of business. So, he came in, put in a special use permit. It's gone through the Planning Commission. They have approved it. You have a copy of the application that Mr. Ferguson put in. He's not from the area. He's, I'm not really pointed with where he's from, but it is on 23, just past the natural tunnel exit. If you look at it, it's right there. You can see it's that. It was before they had houses on it. But now, it's been, those trailers have been removed. It is an agriculture residential area. And with agriculture residential, of course, it has to have a special use permit for mini warehouses. And there is special provisions in the zoning ordinance about mini warehouses, what to require. Mr. Ferguson has a copy of this. He's pointed with, he knows what they're going to have to do to do it. The joint property owners have all been notified and it was presented by Planning Commission, like I said, and they recommended it to the Board for approval. Any questions?
Any comments or questions for Mr. Gilmore? Thanks, sir. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or comment about this public hearing? Anyone?
Of course, what exactly is going to be stored there?
Need materials that is not hazardous, okay? In other words, it's an individual can rent a storage area and they can put what they want to, household items, whatever.
Now, somebody is, let's say somebody comes in there and stores up. Somebody going to make sure there's no hazardous material in what this is being stored?
That is, if you look at part of the regulations, that's part of the regulations. Nobody goes out and actually polices what's stored there, because we have no control over that, just like we don't in any mini warehouse situation.
Any other comments? If you would, if you want to speak, come to the podium if that's where you are. I mean, if you want to speak, I ask you to do that. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will, we will open the public hearing. Any motion to approve?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. They said made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Give her a second. Any discussion? All the folks saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item, the public hearing on special use permit application submitted by future two outdoors for property along US 23 North and the Duffield area tax map numbers 100A1, A1, 100A1, A1. Anyway, it was 1A, A, and 100A1, A2 to be used for billboard signage. So, if you would, Mr. Gilmore, come back.
Good morning. This property is owned by Mr. Riggs, Artie Riggs, who owns Riggs Old. And they are wanting to, you have the application, you all have the application. He signed it. It is, and the property used to be, they're used to sell. The gentleman did it on it and sold it back, sold it to Mr. Riggs. Used to sell, there was concrete, whatnots, and they're on the side of the road. It was zoned several years ago. We changed all the zoning in that area as a group and it's own commercial. And again, even in a commercial, it takes a special use permit for it to have a sign, animated signs. And their intention, according to their special, if you can see, even in their supplements and in the zoning ordinance concerning this, there is how big they can be, what they have to be. There is a special on signage, what they have to meet. According to the gentleman that put it in, they're going to put two signs. One would be facing north. If you're driving north, you could see it and it will be animated. And it's most, he said, most likely it's going to be about the McDonald's in Duffield and the whatnot markets that they have down there. And the one going that you would see going south is going to be for the marathon at State Light. Because Mr. Riggs owns both of them. So, he says it's going to advertise. So, they put in the applications and they were given a copy of all the regulations. They know what they have to meet and what they have to do. And so, they, we have notified the property owners. Haven't got any negative comments from anybody. So, any questions?
Any comments or questions about this special use permit?
Going to be like the one at Food City or wherever city?
I don't know. It's different company. It might be bigger. There is a limit on the square footage. There is a limit on the signage. They need to contact VDOT. VDOT agreed that they could do it. So, you know, they really haven't given me, given me anything but a hand-drawn plans. And it was, I will say, 10 by 12, 10 by 14, something like, yes, something like the one across in front of Food City.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Gilmore? All right, thank you. There's no opposition from the Planning Commission, correct?
No opposition. The Planning Commission did recommend it.
I know the deal, but I want to make sure. All right, with that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We will vote, need a, any motion to approve this special use permit?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. They said made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second. Any discussion? All the folks saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. So, it's done. Next item is item nine. Folks in VDOT here, Mr. Sumpert is here, so if you would come to the podium, please. How you doing?
Good morning.
Glad to have you this morning.
Good to be here.
All right. You want your girl to come with you or yon yon?
I'll, I'll yield for support.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, I am here this morning to provide you with the quarterly report. We have produced a report that we provided for you. I think that Ms. Starnes has got it in your packet and sent to you. I'm not going to go over every single little detail that's in that report. You have that. I will just kind of hit the highlights of things. As been mentioned earlier, is that there's been some heavy rains and floods that's occurred. Most recent was we had two, three inches of rain that occurred on February 16th and 17th. Caused some washouts and some slides in Scott County and some of our other areas as well. And our crews have been working to clean ditches, unstop pot and that type of work since the storms have occurred, making some progress with that. And one of the bigger items was the slide on Cliff Mountain that you sent me the video, Mr. Mann as well. We have mobilized to work on that slide that's up there with long, long boom excavator. So, we're hopeful that that work can be done within the next couple of weeks to take care of that road and get it back, get it done. Overall, we, we've been working throughout the county, trying to take care of all those types of problems. Also getting ready for the spring with pothole patching, ditching, tree trimming, as was stated also by the lady from Snowflake. We've had a crew that's from our roadside group that's been out, been doing some localized, some larger tree trimming. The roadside group is making plans as well to go and add some additional contract work throughout the year to do some of their tree trimming that was mentioned as well. So, I want to move on down to the rural rustic update. Got a little bit more information to add other than just what's on the update there. I do kind of want to fill you in a little bit on how that we're moving forward with plans going into the year. Our hired equipment contract had expired and so we didn't have that resource about the last year or so. And so, what we have done is we've recently awarded a new hired equipment contract, which will add resources to us both in maintenance and doing our rural rustic projects. And we had a pre-work meeting with them last week. And we are currently in assessment on the size of crews and amount of equipment that's going to be needed going into the upcoming season to help us. That will shift our folks away from doing the rural rustics. I'm talking about the That will shift our folks away from doing the rural restics, I'm talking about our folks, the state forest crews that have done the rural restics in, in most recent years, back to doing more of the regular maintenance that we can take care of instead of trying to do the construction work. So, they've done a good job, but we just need them to, um, focus more on the regular construction work, things that get mentioned that comes in, cleaning ditches, taking care of unpaid roads, um, a lot of mowing and that, that type of work. So, you see listed there that we have, um, on the list, Route 619 Hinoob Road. Uh, that, um, project is, uh, for the environmental review is scheduled to get, um, started in, in May. There's a project where that there are some funds that are identified, um, some forestry funds that will go on that project. Um, we also working on getting, um, 689 and Good Cooper Road, um, started, and we are hoping to get that one underway. There's two segments of that in August of this year. We also don't have on here, but we'll update it in the future. We have, uh, 856 Furlock Hollow, 693 Eaton Road, Eaton Hill, uh, Road, um, and 654 Horton Summit Road. That will be, um, uh, rural rustic projects coming up in, in this, this summer. And we had some projects that were, um, done last year, uh, that we surface treated, and we're going to finish up by paving, uh, this spring. And those are, uh, 753 Vlon Road, 707 Nuland Hollow, 681 Gillenwater, and 657 Greens Chapel. Those roads will be paved. Those are all part of what's in your six-year plan that, uh, that we have, uh, have done. Now, um, mentioning, uh, six-year plan, just kind of, um, let the ladies know, uh, as you all know here too, is in the spring, late spring, early summer, we do our update for the six-year plan, will we add roads to the plan? Will we advertise in the public hearing for that as usual? That will be the time, whenever for y'all to consider whether or not you want to add any portion of that roadway, uh, or others into the six-year plan. And so, we'll, we'll have that upcoming in the next few months. Another element of our report that we've added this time, uh, just, I think, provided you some statistics, is on the second page. It's a list of the work orders that we get, um, that we get in, that are open, closed, and the grand total of each type of work category that we get. Obviously, with so many gravel roads here in Scott County, the, uh, the gravel roads generate biggest part of, um, majority of our work orders, uh, more than any other task. Um, you can see that, uh, from January the first through the end of February, uh, our totals are showing that we had, um, grand total of around forty-seven work orders that come in for, um, the gravel roads. Um, we've closed ten of them, thirty-seven were opened at the time that we submitted the, uh, the report. And that's kind of reflective of the, um, call-ins that we get from the rains and the storms that come in, um, with the ditches, um, being stocked up, washouts, uh, that kind of thing. Are what we end up having, um, you know, to schedule as a result of these work orders. You see other items that's mentioned on down through there, there, um, some of them are even, I think it's always interesting too, uh, we had, um, twenty-three calls on dead animals. That's, it takes a big part of the time to get the dead animals out the roadway as well. And then we had, uh, the flexible pavement is the regular hard surface pothole type patching that would, um, requests that come in. There are twenty-two of those, uh, twelve for debris, and then we have just, uh, the occasional work order that comes in for other little items such as requesting for, uh, pavement striping or, uh, speed studies and that kind of thing that comes in there as part of that as well. So, we had a total of around a hundred and sixty-three work orders that come in during the period of time. Those are work orders that we have to schedule with, uh, with our staff. As we go forward, we'll be looking to put, um, you know, use the balance between the hired equipment and our folks in order to work on, try to get, um, keep that number as, um, you know, minimized as much as possible, but that's pretty much an average regardless of the resource, given, uh, the types of roadways that we have that are going to come in. So, uh, with that, um, leave it there at this point. It, uh, also on page three, um, just got a picture, the slide that had come in, closed, uh, Route 600 in Fairview. Um, just put a picture in there of that, where that we cleaned that up, that was quite a bit of effort that took. We had to get contractor coming in and help us, um, take care of that because it's kind of a dangerous situation there for, um, folks to work on. So, with that, uh, do you have any, any questions, comments?
I've got, I've got a couple, if you don't mind.
Okay.
About three years ago, uh, Downaloon Road on Sarah Circle, there was a culvert that in the springtime floods, basements and crawl spaces down there. Uh, we were told probably a couple of years ago that there's a new piece of equipment to come in and that either ditched or put a new culvert through. Well, several, several of us went to Richmond last weekend, we were told that that piece of equipment had been sent back because it would kill crawdads and polymogs or something. That was the quote, wasn't it?
That's what they said, you know?
And, and I'm wondering about that now, um.
I'm not sure.
Be aware of that.
There might been some, some miscommunication or whatever, type of equipment that was discussed. We, um, in our ditching, um, we typically use, um, a couple of different devices that we have available. We have now a, um, what we call a ditch pro, it's a V-shaped type of device that goes on loader that we go and clean ditches out with. Um, it's, allows us to dip right into the ditch line and, um, and scoop them out, load them up on a truck. That's been used extensively in Scott County, that's still what our plan is. Sometimes, you know, we even depend on, do we use tobacco? Um, I'm unaware of any, um, I think Ms. Crowder was maybe at that same meeting, or?
I don't know who made that statement, it was the lady from Bristol. This thing's not a ditching problem, the culvert is probably covered three-fourths of the way up.
Okay.
And it's, it's flooded right now, if you go down there and look at it, it's a small pond there.
Okay, y'all make sure, y'all got that down?
That's on Downaloon Road, Sarah Circle. And the other question I've got, this is Danny's area over there, but I'm very acquainted with it. Route sixty-five, about two years ago, they told us that they were gonna, B-Doc said they were gonna come in and, and redo that bridge, and it's not, they even talked about going up Big Branch there and making a road around it to come back on sixty-five going through there. And nothing's been done, I just wonder if you knew.
I'll, I'll have to check.
It was a metal bridge, they paved over it, they did do that.
Yeah.
It was a metal grade type bridge.
Okay, I'll have to check on that and get back to you with that one too.
Okay.
Those are types of things that we'll get back to you, and then we also include in our report to you when it come, when it comes to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Sumner?
I have a couple I'd love to mention, uh, which, some of the B-Doc folks kinda looked at my driveway. What's happened, B-Doc put a sign up, the big trucks cannot go across Hanglock Parkway, Route seventy-two, they had the big sign there at my driveway. And it happens regularly, these tractor trailers, they lose, they have a cell phone for the GPS, they lose signal. And a couple of days ago, JB Hunt tractor trailer was trying to turn there, well, he high centered, his landing gear's high centered. And, uh, so I went up there and he, uh, finally got him, he got back, had the road blocked. If they can put a sign, if they go a quarter mile, they can turn around. My driveway, the way that curve is, is slow, but they can't turn there. They can, but they gotta be really careful with their high center every time it gets stuck. So, if they can put a sign up as a, as a turnaround on six oh eight, I think, if they, they can turn around, that's where he went. I got him in my truck, drove him up to where he could turn, and he went there and turned around.
So, we just need to relocate that sign?
Well, not that, if they, yeah, maybe, but they put a sign up saying there's a turnaround quarter mile ahead.
Okay.
I think that would help, and it's happened, I got a little beer truck off of it, my pickup on time, you know, he got high centered and he couldn't turn, he couldn't, uh, you know, he got stuck there. But anyway, if we put something up, a sign is okay, I mean, but, you know, it says by six oh eight, no trucks are allowed, which is the Miller Yard Road. But if you put a sign up, turn around quarter mile ahead, that would help a man. This poor guy, how he got from, he was from, from Columbus, and he's going to Kentucky, how he got it done, Gannon, he didn't know. Uh, JB Hunt, fifty-three foot trailer, how he got there, and I said, how'd you get here? And he said, going to Kentucky to get a load. And he had trouble speaking English, by the way. And so, my Dungannon, we called it Dunganese, he had trouble understanding me, but I did get him in my truck, showed him where he could turn around, and he, and he did that. He pulled it, pulled him over yard and was able to turn around. But the sign is fine, but just saying, you know, it's a turnaround quarter mile ahead.
Right, we'll see what we can do.
But it happens a lot, and, and sometimes they have to get a big brick or something to come and, um, and pull them loose once they get hung up to the point where they cannot, uh, cannot get loose. But it happens regularly, they're, and they, like I said, they lose the GPS, but how he got from Columbus so high, going to Kentucky, got the Dungannon, he didn't know. How'd he got there? But, and one more thing, and I mentioned to you the last time you were here, and Stagney will attest to this, when they, they, and we mentioned it last time, when they did the, the right-of-way clearing for the power lines and stuff, they ditched and they mulched some of the tree level, the big trunks of the trees they left them in the ditch lines and all the way down through there, they left all of that.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know, I thought maybe they cleaned up eventually, but they have, it looks horrible, where they just, they cut the, they, they mulched up the branches, but left the body of the trees laying.
It's all along Route seventy-two.
It looks ugly, it really does, it's just horrible, and bothered to clean it up, I don't know.
I don't, we will, um, I think we had some of our folks talk to them, but we'll see what we can do.
Anyway, I know, I know we can talk about it away from the meeting here, but I wanted to bring it up because I don't want to forget. But this thing with big trucks, if you put something there, it said, turn around quarter mile ahead, that would help that situation. Especially when they can't speak English, and it was, we did have trouble communicating, and, uh, how he become a truck driver, I don't know. And, but he struggled, even driving trucks, same luck, but, anyway, anyone else got comments or questions?
Let me add one sentence, and I'll, we'll very quickly, concerning Sarah Circle down there, we had a bus driver come in and say that he was afraid he was gonna lose his job because he was turning doors off the bus at where you turn, where that culvert is on Sarah Circle. And I went out to the bus garage and complained to the bus supervisor, he took a bus and that driver down there, and he drove. And he said, when he went over onto Sarah Circle, he said, I was surprised because you couldn't see it, but he said it almost raised the front wheel off of it.
I'm impressed.
Just the, the pavement there, as you turn off, down, moving onto Sarah Circle. Take a look at that.
Okay, so we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, anything else?
Appreciate you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I'll get them.
You got my easy today?
I know, I'm kinda shocked.
I am too. And, uh, sorry, we do appreciate y'all, and B-Doc's been a good partner for the county, and I know you do the best you can, we do appreciate you, Kenny. Alright, next item is, uh, Spearhead Trails, anyone here wishing to speak, uh, about Spearhead Trails? We had a speaker supposed to come, I don't see him, but anyone here? We'll move on to that court company representative here, if you'll come forward, that we know the yard, it's a state property. Get us in our, in our finances.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, nice to see y'all this morning.
Hello.
I've got a handout that I believe, you may have seen in advance, our county for everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the camera right here.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, always nice to see y'all. Um, uh, what we have, um, this morning, we're asked to, to come and talk a little about is, um, I'm really thinking about how we finance some of the improvements to the courthouse, something we've been talking about with you and the county administrator here for a little while. Um, you know, that plan has, has changed and evolved, and I think what we have today is a good one in terms of an updated plan here. Just wanna talk through how it is we go forward with that. So, um, on page one, in terms of the background, I think you and the board know a lot of this, and so, I've gone through that, that process. And where we really are, as we understand it, is, uh, the courthouse, uh, about one point four million in terms of the initial project cost. We also have a radio system need, um, and using some of the ARPA dollars, that's federal grant monies that have come in, and dedicating to the courthouse, and then kinda using the, uh, what was gonna be for the courthouse and financing the radio system in its place, works well in terms of the use of the proceeds, and we'll kinda walk through how we think about that going forward. So, on page number two, um, again, just a little bit of a broad brush overview before we get into the details, but I think it's important, especially in this environment. Number one here, uh, understand the county's strengthened its reserve levels over the past six or so fiscal years. That's a very, very important, um, sort of measurement and metric to lenders, to outside entities that are looking at Scott County and any county in terms of your financial strength and resilience. So, the fact that it's gotten stronger is very, very important as we look at the overall plan, whether it's the courthouse, the radio, or anything. We'll show you what that looks like on the next page. Number two here, we'll talk a little bit about the county's existing tax-supported debt profile, this is what we call, sort of our terminology, basically us, community, county, and schools. Um, it's a modest amount, relatively speaking to your peers, and so we'll walk you through that. Number three, just a, a financing strategy that, that fits within our budget, what you have in terms of the cash flows of the counties. We'll talk through that a little bit, um, and then talk through the schedule. Uh, so on page number three, uh, again, just to kinda start off and talk about fund balance for a moment. This, again, we've been before you and appreciate that a number of times, talk about how important this is to the financial strength and resilience of the county. And so, what we've shown here is the last five years of your unassigned fund balance. So, if you go look at your audit, um, the very bottom line on that sort of balance sheet, so to speak, is what's called the unassigned fund balance. It's really our reserves, our rainy day fund, um, you know, what kind of dollars do we have in the savings account, um, for emergency, for cash flow needs, et cetera, et cetera. That's kinda the first thing, all the numbers in the audit, first thing that we and outside entities tend to get a look at, to understand how the county.
Is that about where we need to be, you think, as far as this?
At about nine point two percent, we'd love to see a little bit higher, uh, but that trend from twenty-one to twenty-two is certainly good.
Good.
So, if you were about eight point four in twenty-twenty-one, that increase from five point two to six point three million, if you're looking at the bottom right there, Mr. Chairman, that's a good trend.
Good.
Would really love to see a little bit higher. And so, if you see on that top right graph, that red line, the ten percent policy, we really working to strive to get to at least ten percent and keep ourselves there. Would be sort of the right, the right strategy going forward. Um, so, good trajectory, twenty-one to twenty-two, um, but certainly, to your good question, Mr. Chair, continuing to build that, we think is gonna be important. Get ourselves above ten percent and okay, keep ourselves there.
I never heard of ten percent number before, I don't, I don't remember hearing it, but that's, that's, I like, well, you got that out there, that's good, safe that way.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and I think if you looked around at, at peers and across the state, that tends to be a, a solid, kinda lower level benchmark nowadays. Uh, I think if we see inflationary pressures, we see capital costs getting higher, the, the best way we can kinda safeguard against all those kinda pressures is to have a really nice unassigned balance. So, I think we get ourselves a policy of ten percent, kinda use that as a planning tool, if you're thinking about the budget, this budget, the future budgets. Uh, that would really be where, where we think we wanna go. And one other point I'll make there, Mr. Chair, on, on that fund balance side of things, uh, you know, for the last ten or so years, the dollars you have in the bank have earned very, very low just because interest rates have been so low. What we've seen the last year is a very big change in what you can actually earn in the money you have in the bank. And so, not only is having a strong fund balance just a good practice and good conservative financial management, but it can also actually make you some money nowadays.
Okay.
And so, that's something we're gonna be thinking a little bit about, and how that will happen, how, how we can take, where's our savings account, and make some more money for the taxpayers, take some pressure off of the budget.
Okay.
So, it ends up being a, a cost saver for the county. So, we'll flip then to page number four, this is the tax-supported debt profile, uh, mentioned that on the front side. Um, again, we've got about four million dollars plus or minus, at least in the way we, we tend to look at it. Uh, it's a very modest amount of outstanding debt for the county, and so you start, as we think about maybe financing this radio system in a good position, in that we have a very modest amount of debt. It's all fixed rate, it's paid like a mortgage, so we're making annual payments each and every year. So we're making annual payments each and every year. And thus, that principal balance is declining. Interest rates right now on your existing loans, very, very low. To the extent there's ever an ability to refinance, certainly we'll bring that back to you. We've done a fair amount in the last couple of years. We don't really see that in this environment. We've done so much within a low interest rate time period. So you see how quickly it's paid off. Within about a decade or thereabouts, all of the existing county debt has picked off. So that does start from a good healthy position. We're being responsible with how we manage that. And we've got some capacity to take on some things within the confines of what fits in the budget. Page number five, in terms of how we think about going forward with this in terms of the radio equipment. We've done this a number of times with the county and all of your peers in the past. We call them a direct bank loan whereby we go out to local banks, regional banks, national banks, give them all a chance to bid on it. Everybody has a fair shake at it. It's a competitive process. And we're able to go through that competitive process, get all those results, bring them back to you, let you see them before you even make any decisions on which way to go or how to go forward. And so that's really what we're saying there on that page. Takes about 45, 60 days. We've got a schedule at the back here. But with your blessing, we could start very quickly and move down that path. One of the reasons, just another couple of bullet points on page six, but one I'll point out is that the direct bank loan approach usually has very favorable prepayment provisions. So we bring everything back to you. We care not about, not just about the interest rates, certainly we care about the interest rate, but also what kind of prepayment provisions, flexibility do we have into the future? And those direct bank loans usually have very flexible prepayment provisions. So we'll give all that back to you when we come back here. On page seven, interest rates right now. You've probably seen this in the news and in the headlines. It's been a big shift over the course of the last 12 or 14 months. The interesting thing is that long-term rates, if we're going to go finance this over about 10 years in terms of the radio system, long-term rates are higher than they were during the all-time lows of the pandemic. But they're still historically very solid. And so if you look at that graph on the left-hand side, that's showing what we call the 20-bond index. It's kind of a, an index for what are tax-exempt borrowing rates for local governments like us and what those look like sort of across the whole industry, across the country. And so if you look at that left-hand graph, this is coming back to 1980, certainly we're at a historically very low level when you compare it to the 80s, the 90s, even the early 2000s. They're higher than they were, again, over the last couple of years. But they look historical perspective, still in a very favorable position. So we flip the page to page number eight. Just to give you a couple of details here. In terms of the radio system, we're using a planning asset of about $1,004,000. Been going back and forth with the county administrator just getting some of those details locked in. But plus or minus within that range, we can kind of lock that number down exactly by the time we come back to you within the next 45 or 60 days. We've planned on these numbers at a 5% interest rate. That is conservative relative to where we are today. Expect that'll be lower than that when we go through the competitive bidding process. But we always try to err on the more conservative side when we do the planning. Contemplating financing this over a 10-year period. Again, radio equipment doesn't have quite the useful life of a building, things like that. So we don't want to stretch it out too long. But that roughly 10-year period is pretty normal for equipment of this variety. Page number nine, just gives you kind of a visual graphic representation of when we take our existing debt service and we layer this estimate for the radio system on top of it, what does that look like? So the dark green is our existing debt service. Recognize that from a couple of pages ago. We've got a nice little step down between 24 and 25 fiscal years. And that kind of tannish gold color there is what the payments would look like in the radio system. So kind of fold that in within the existing budget. For estimating purposes, annual payments probably about $200,000, $210,000. We'll have all those final numbers when we come back to you. You can still see a relatively modest amount of annual debt service for the county as a whole once we factor all this in. On pages 10 and 11, I mentioned this on the front side and probably have a couple of times in that the county has a very modest amount of outstanding debt. And so these pages give you a little better snapshot of what we mean by that on a relative basis. So this is a ratio, it's called debt service versus expenditures. It's basically how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget are going to make a debt service payment. Anything below 8% is considered very strong. Anything below 15% is considered strong. We're about 1%. And so there's a very small proportion of our budget annually that is going to make a debt service payment.
That's a good thing.
Have a lot of financial flexibility. The county's by no means over-leveraged. And the other piece you'll see at the bottom there is even when we layer on this radio system, and again, that kind of yellowish gold star, we remain under even the 2% range. So pretty modest impact to that ratio as we go forward. No, no concerns with it. We would think as maybe we move through the budget process, putting in place some policies surrounding the amount of outstanding debt and payments would be a good practice. A lot of your peers and neighbors have that. So we've given you that red line, again, Mr. Chair, maybe an idea of where to set that policy, keeping you within that 8% range with, A, give you capacity for whatever it is comes down the pipe in the future. Something will come down, you know that. And so that would just be our recommendation as we talk through the next couple of months. Page 11, just one more ratio, really a policy that you could think about putting in place. This is debt versus assessed value. Really the outstanding amount of debt relative to the total tax base in the county. While it's a different ratio, you can see a very similar picture. You're a very strong position relative to that ratio. Less than one-half of 1% is a very, very strong position to be in. Up from a policy level, anything below 2.5% would still be deemed solidly. Which is why we recommend it at that particular level. So with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, what we would propose in terms of the schedule going forward, it's on page number 12 here. It's March 1st somehow. I don't know where January and February went, but it is indeed March. So the plan was to present this to you this morning. And with your collective blessing, over the next couple of weeks, we would pull together everything we need in order to do that competitive bidding process of the balance of March, bring that back towards the end of March, and really be in a position at your April meeting to be back with all the results, who bid, what the terms, conditions, interest rates, and be able to make a recommendation you can act on at that time.
Be good.
With that, closing, it happened over the balance of April. We've got May 3rd in here just as a placeholder if something happens from a schedule perspective. Don't expect we'd need that, but just kind of like to be aware of the contingencies of it or so. I think the one other action for you, the reimbursement resolution.
They have that in their packets.
Very good. Very good. So that is, while we're not the tax lawyers, that really just covers you as a board. Do they extend any funds? Do you need to extend it? Before we need to closing, just kind of make sure from a timing perspective, you can pay yourself back if you don't have the funds for those dollars. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair, members of the board, anybody that you have.
If you have any comments or questions. How do you pronounce your last name?
Lox.
Lox.
Yeah. But with that last name, how, whatever.
It's not typical Scott County name.
Yeah, it's not typical, though. I want to make sure.
Good presentation, and I'm proud of where we are financially. So anyway, comments or questions? Ask Kyle, how's that?
That works. That usually, it's usually Kyle, and I just kind of stick my hand up.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions?
I guess the only question I have, if, is there always the option, let's say as time goes on during that 10 years, can, if the interest rates fall, can we refinance that? Is that an option?
Absolutely.
If it's well, if it works out?
Yeah, yeah. The detailed answer there will depend upon what we give back from the banks. But certainly, that is probably the second most important thing we look at after, you know, the interest rate obviously is the first thing you look at on a new loan. But the second piece is what kind of flexibility do we have to refinance, even pay it down quicker? Trying to avoid, to the greatest extent possible, penalties, blackout period, et cetera.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right.
All right.
Appreciate you coming.
We thank you. See you in a, a, a month.
Okay. Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right. So anyway, we do that. Okay. So we have to approve this report as presented to you, this finance preliminary schedule report. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay. That part of the motion. Okay. All right, we need to, a motion to approve this and then to allow, to say again, to go out and get bids?
Yeah, to bid for the finance.
All right. So do we have a motion to do that?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Addington, second. Any discussion? All right, vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so motion carried.
We have another portion to that as well. There's a resolution in your folders. And this resolution will just allow us, if something happens, the equipment invoices come in before we close on the note, that we can reimburse ourselves.
Okay. All right.
So it's a couple-page resolution. If you want to take a minute to look through that. Sands Anderson, our bond counsel, has prepared this. Ms. Kegley has reviewed with no issues.
Okay.
We have done these in the past for capital projects, so it's pretty standard.
My trust, Ms. Kegley, is three pages of them. I'm going to read all of that by the trust, our county attorney. She's on level 10. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented to you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Addington made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Addington, second. Any discussion? All right, vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Starz. Keeping me straight. All right. Anything else?
It's all on it.
Next item is the Budget Committee and then a couple of people, I think, is interested in serving, Ms. Addington and Mr. Bricky was interested in serving. And the fact we've had trouble getting people volunteer and have to pull, and so with that, are you all?
Yes.
We're all.
Yes.
We don't need to vote on that. I just pull them, do we need to vote on it?
You can just.
Okay, that's what I thought. So you are a party as a chair. I do point you off to the Budget Committee.
Thank you.
That's all, it's a five-four, it's a five-four, it's not a little caution. Thank you all. But it is, it's time-consuming, and it is, and you're still working. It's hard to do, but anyway, you're involved in a lot of things here in the county. And so anyway, we appreciate both of you wanting to serve on that Budget Committee. All right, next item is 12B. Will we amend the agenda for our insurance debt, Ms. Starz?
We did receive our local choice health insurance renewal last week. We do not have an increase. Everything will remain the same. So I need approval to authorize me to do a renewal for the insurance and include those amounts in the draft budget.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Addington, second. Any discussion? All right, vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so motion carried. Next item is the specific bookkeeping. And she, you can do that, I guess, Ms. Starz?
I will. Under grants, please accept Sheriff's Office, DCJS, Fern Justice Assistance Grant, Local Law Enforcement Law, LOLE Grant Number FFY22. If accepted, please establish expense code for police supplies And that's all the grants.
Or do we have a motion on this grant? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, a second. Any discussion? All right, vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so motion carried.
That's all the bookkeeping.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next item is appointments. You would, Ms. Taylor?
You have two positions on the courthouse facilities committee. One is for a citizen position, and one is for a representative from the Towne Gate City.
Okay.
You have two applications for the citizen position. Lisa McCarty has been serving, and she reapplied. You also have an application from Mary Delin Lawson.
Okay, do we have any nominations for the citizen position on the courthouse facilities committee? Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Lisa McCarty.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, need a motion, nominations cease, vote back a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, second. All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So Ms. McCarty will continue to serve on that.
On the Towne Gate City Representative, Robert Richards has been serving as the town representative, and he did not reapply.
Okay. Do you not feel interested in serving or not? Can I talk to him or anything?
Is that the mayor?
Yeah, he is. Do we have any nomination for the Towne Gate City for that position for the town? Do we have any nominations?
I'd have to talk to a couple partners.
Okay. Okay, we'll look at the next meeting. The next is Public Service Authority. Ms. Tatum.
We have three positions to fill on the Public Service Authority. Terry Campbell, Randall Kincaid, and Darrell Jeter have been serving, and they all three reapplied.
I have a question though. Can Randall Kincaid, since he lives in Kingsport, serve on this board?
He can.
He can? Because he owns property and?
Because it's not a requirement, residency, for that board.
Okay.
Personally, I mean, I know that he's, I mean, he's, he's been on a long time. He's lived in Doug Gama, but I mean, my thoughts, he should live in Somerton County. But again, he can, he can, he is qualified to be on that. But anyways, just my thoughts. So open up for nominations. If you want to do, there's three positions, do them all three. And let me do that sadly, just, we've got three applicants.
Just one at a time.
One at a time. All right, for the first position, any nominations?
I'll nominate Darrell Jeter.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, I will recommend that we close and vote back a motion. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make one.
All right, Mr. Chairman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll stand.
Darrell, I'll stand. All right. The next one, number two, do we have any nominations for that?
I'll nominate Terry Campbell.
Any other nominations? Need a motion, nominations cease, vote back a motion. Do we have a motion? Say again?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Darrell made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Addington, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the next one on the Public Service Authority. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Mike Bricky.
Any other nominations? Not need a motion, nominations cease, vote back a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Addington made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Addington, any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll stand.
I could stand, okay. All right, thank you all. Thanks for serving. Next item, the county attorney items, Ms. Kegley.
I don't have anything today. I have to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Kegley? If not, y'all will take a break at 10 o'clock, and then we give the county administration stuff. We'll call it. In fact, your order, the next item, item 16, the county administrative items, Ms. Starnes, if you would.
If you get your green sheet out of your packet, our general fund balance after the March claims is 13,296,794 dollars and 62 cents. The claims look much better this month, not near as bad. Early cents totaled 71,458 dollars and 69 cents. And total current claims are 151,452.02. Some of the larger ones that you can see was our fuel bill for January was 20,821 dollars and 10 cents. We had some truck repairs, Green Cube Solutions for 5250, that was paid for with contingency. That was the sheriff's office container that you approved last month. March 23, payment for behavioral district one, or planning district one behavioral health, 14,456.25. Scott County Economic Development, we had a payment for VRA loan, 12,184.38. And Treasurer of Virginia, CIS, in conversion, 23,336.61. So total claims to approve this month totaled 222,910 dollars and 71 cents.
Our general fund is still up, and the skill system, I'm still not taking, let you out.
They have pulled down 2 million, and that was to pay off the line of credit. So once they pull the remaining down, if we just took that out to look at number-wise, we would be right in range before we were at last year. At this time.
I'll make a motion. We pay the bills.
Okay. All right. Mr. Addington made a motion to pay the claims. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is county vehicles.
You have a worksheet that's in your packet. Well, it's not a worksheet. It's just our, to go out to bid for two counties' fours. We will send that to local dealerships and see what kind of response we get back. And I'll report that at the next board meeting. So I just need authorization to send out concealed bids for two 2023 Ford X4s.
Do we have a motion authorized or county administration to do that? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else?
That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is report from Mr. Cox. He's here from tourism. So Pam. You look lovely today. Come on in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all doing?
Good.
Um, I don't have really, I don't have a lot to say today, good or not. So, I know you're laughing, but am I sick? No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just kind of, I'm wrapping up. So, um, and, you know, I just, we had, just kind of go over the events that we had since last time I saw you. We did the Hack City Christmas Open House. We had, on the same day was the Santa train. And on the same day was the Doug Gama Development Commission Christmas party that they do. That's always a really nice thing that they do down there. I always like to go. They had a different Santa Claus this year. He was an odd Santa Claus. He was red. Oh, golly. Santa, I'm sorry.
He wasn't the real Santa.
He wasn't the real Santa.
Impostor.
He was, he was.
He was a helper, I guess.
Yeah, he was a helper. He was just kind of rude to those kids. We did Christmas parades, and I guess, no, I got to be the grand marshal for the Christmas parade this year. And my husband told me that I was the loudest person in the parade, even over the bands. He said, he said, "I could hear you all the way up at the corner." As I was cutting down through there. They had lighting of the tunnel again this year. And the week, I don't know if any of you all have ever gone to the special week, to that last week. They have all kinds of special events, and one of them is you can take your pets down to the bottom of the tunnel. I could never put one of my dogs in a chair and ride it down through there. That would be kind of a scary thing to do. The Towne Gate City this year did a new event called Tinsel the Town. And they had businesses, local businesses and organizations. They bought trees and they decorated them. And they had about 20 trees. And they let people vote online for the tree that they thought was the best. And they had like 7,000 votes online. So they brought a lot of people into downtown. And, you know, as evidenced by the votes, and the Scott County Food Pantry won. They, I was down there the day that they were decorating. They did a really nice job. All of those, did you, did you all go down and see them? Everybody did such a great job. And I'm sure that they will do that again next year.
Very good.
Yeah. Had some ribbon cutting, did some groundbreaking. The Norton Expo Center, and I know Ms. Starnes participated in that. That's going to be really a great thing right there at the, as you go up High Knoll for them to have in Norton. So I'm really proud of them for being able to do that. And I know I saw a lot of you all at Mamaw's house. And that is Alicia Kearns, the local Realtor, owns that. And that is one of the more unique Airbnb properties that I have seen. She, she went to great care. And, you know, just great effort to make that really feel like you're in your Mamaw's house. Like, you know, if you're sitting there and you play by the creek, and she has all kinds of little extra touches. She has little Debbie cakes for everybody when you come in and stay. And you can see that they, that she and her mother and her mother-in-law are standing there against a backdrop. And her mother painted that, and that's actually two doors that slide together. And that is where people can go and have their photographs taken. That's the picture wall. So, you know, I, I thought it was just a really nice little property that she's done there. And I think, I think she's doing already pretty well booked out. A lot of you all were at Deep Pomer. I thought the food was excellent. I don't know if anybody's been back down there to eat. I was supposed to go last week or, yeah, but didn't get to go. I had something else to do. The Virginia 250 Committee, we have been meeting. Jeff Harrington is the chairman of this. He has set up a Facebook page. So if you will go and like that Facebook page, it's VA250. Next week, a meeting with the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association to talk to them and see what their involvement is going to be. We are planning on participating in the Fourth of July Parade, you know, just to kind of let people know that there is something going on. And there's been a discussion about partnering with Lee County because the folks from Spearhead want to do the 200-mile run from Martin Station to, I think it's Carter's Fort. Don't ask me how that's going to be done or handled because I don't know the logistics on that. Tourism assistance, I don't know if anybody had ever gone and looked at the Carterfold website. I think they had one of the first original websites that had ever been designed, and it had never been updated. So with assistance from Virginia Tourism Corporation, they allowed them to have $20,000 upfront. But this was a grant that Rita and I had applied for back during COVID. So they went ahead and gave her the money upfront so she could pay for it. And the folks from Corporate Image that do my website, they did that website. And if you can go online and look at it, and you can even buy tickets online now. So that's, you know, a step in the right direction for her. And this new website allows her also to have, use Google AdWords so that she is, you know, searchable, much searchable better. I don't know if that's the correct word or not. I helped the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association. I did a pamphlet for them because they are, just like every volunteer organization around here, they're desperately trying to get volunteers. They're going to do an open house sometime later in the spring to try to get folks to volunteer and join them. Because I don't know if any of you all have been involved with the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, but their members are older, and, you know, they need to get more and more young people involved in it. And hopefully, they will be able to do that. So if any of you all have interest in doing that, they do a really good job. They've been really active. And they do the reenactments at the blockhouse. They're the folks behind the Daniel Boone Wilderness Interpretive Center. And, you know, it's just, they keep the history of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail alive. And I don't know, but if you all realize this, it's not the cover of the Rolling Stone, but it's just as probably better for us that we made. The Wilderness Road Blockhouse is the first cover for the Virginia Tourism State Visitors Day this year. They're doing three of them. And I think another one is like in Northern Virginia, and then the third one is Back Tale of Dragon. So got two from this region, which, you know, that's a pretty cool thing. Presentations, I've done presentations for the Scott County Rotary, the Northeast Tennessee Rotary Club, talk about Scott County tourism, and also the upcoming Virginia 250. Oh, I might want to back up just a little bit and say that Virginia 250, we've not really talked about it yet, that they may make a request for funds. I don't know what the plans are about that. I'm supposed to do a presentation next week, Scott County Leadership Class. Annie's Project, that's the young group of women foreigners. And I just got a call from her yesterday that said she didn't have enough participants this year. Normally, I teach a marketing class to them, you know, tell them the things that they need to go ahead and get started with the business and everything. But she didn't have enough people participate, which is kind of sad because I've done that for probably about the last seven years since I've been here. I have a Rotary presentation in June to the big Rotary Club in Kingsport. So we'll see how that goes. I'll, I'll promise to just talk and keep my opinions to myself about people and things. The ARPA funds, Freedom, I have, for some reason, I have struggled with this grant. I have worked on this grant since December the 15th, and I am still not approved. I have decided that I am just dumber than dumb. So Freedom, I asked Freedom, I said, "Can you look at this and see what I'm missing?" But anyway, if we, when we do get the funds, we're going to do digital kiosk, kind of like a digital visitor center where folks can go and they can download itineraries to their phone and things like that. And I found a local group that can do that. It's a group called Creative Energy out of Johnson City. And they bid on it, and they did. We sent a bid out, gosh, it's been a long time now. It was back during the summer. But they came out as the low bid. They were 29.5, right at the $30,000. And the other bid was 54,000. So it's a huge difference. I sent out four, but only had two come back. Free media, I have a mistake right there. For last year, we had 259,303 dollars. And for the total time that I have kept track of media since I have been here, it's totaled well over two, close to almost $3 million in free media that has been generated through tourism. I continue to do the weekly newsletters when we have events going on. January and December is kind of a low. We don't have that many events going on. I just kind of tend to use Facebook for that. And so that's it. Questions? I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to wrap up, get the, get the website all ready for my successor and trying to, you know, just write things up and take care of what needs to be done. So.
What I have to say, I talked to a couple on the board here. I know the Carterfold's starting back up, I think. They've been closed.
Yes. This week.
Yeah. But I want maybe, sometime maybe this year, maybe early summer, late spring, that some of the board we could go and show that we support them. And Mr. Bricky said he was good with it.
Good.
I talked to him. And I wouldn't want to, I mean, just to go and show that we support them. And whoever wants to go could. It would, if we can't, got to be careful about what we sit together and talk. Yeah, we could, I think, as long as we, more than two of us would go. And we got to be careful about having these meetings, you know, if it's two or three, more than two. But anyway.
And I said if I didn't have the beans.
Yeah. But anyway, I'll let you know, if, when everybody, if can go, that wants to go, we can go to show that we support that.
Good.
One of the biggest venues probably in the county that, I mean, that's the roots of the country music where it started. And so, but I'll get with you on that. Maybe we said something else. And I don't want to hold it or anything, but I don't think it would. We're not like, we're, you know, so we show that we support things.
Okay. Yes, as far as I'm concerned, that is the true birthplace of country music.
It is. And I, you know, I'll be honest with you, if we, Bristol kind of took that as a birthplace of country music. It's in Scott County, in Hiltons, Virginia, is where it originated, if not in Bristol. That's where the recording session happened.
Right.
To get it. But the roots is Scott County.
The roots is Scott County. You are absolutely positively correct. So, you know, and I'm sure that Rita would appreciate that. And I do believe her son, Justin, is coming back to the area. He will help her with Carterfold. I think he already has a job back with the school system.
Good.
So he will be here in the summer. So.
Maybe sometime April, May, someone are about, we could do that, get you to sort set up for us, and we could go and, and show, just to show that we support that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And thank for, Ms. Cox, anyone. Good job.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're down toward the end, it looks like. Comments, requests, recommendations for the board. So, Mr. Jeter, you have anything?
Oh, I've got to thank the staff for the good job. Appreciate all the job that the board supervisor does and all the staff does.
One more thing I forgot. Jeff Edge is here, and we'll get back to you in a second. He was going to speak there, says expression, he didn't get it to us. So Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff, about to skip you again, but if you would.
We didn't have to do it today. I could do it later.
I know. But I want to get you in before we leave tonight.
That's fine.
A little bit of a minute, I want to get a short version of it. But I just want to
give you some numbers from the, my three years, past three years in office, that basically will be bragging on the deputies what they've worked, they've done. But they really, when I look through the numbers, if I looked at them, the numbers were sort of outstanding from my perspective because of COVID shut down everything for about a year and a half for what we could do. But anyway, Scott County Central Dispatch received a total of 202,407 calls. Of those calls, received 30,360 were dispatched to the sheriff's office. Total of domestic calls and protective orders was 553. Criminal papers served during this three years was 9,684, which 6,028 felonies, 3,629 misdemeanors, 2,232 drug charges, 182 drug DUI-related charges. Officers issued 3,073 traffic summonses and was dispatched to 998 motor vehicle accidents. Civil process this period served 14,659. And I didn't have no idea that was happening.
Oh, wow.
I don't even know if that's a lot, but that's a lot. There were 5,705 IBR incident-based reporting with 1,716 closed arrests. The sheriff's office provided 5,025 hours of courtroom security, three courtrooms. The sheriff's office provided five thousand, twenty-five hours of courtroom security, three courtrooms. The sheriff's office conducted five hundred and twenty traffic checks. Also, they had nine hundred forty-one out-of-state extraditions, and that's a whole lot.
Most of it Tennessee, probably.
Yeah, it's revolve. Sheriff's office processed one thousand, one hundred eighty-eight concealed gun permits. Also processed five hundred and two fingerprint applications, and deputies unlocked five hundred and seventy-nine vehicles. And that was sort of, that was sort of, that just sort of shocked me, but I guess it, it was. But it's, but that's just a brief overview of some of it. That was the first three years. And taking into consideration with the COVID, they would have been a lot more. That's, that's a lot of work that they've done. It's not me, but that's what they're out there doing, you know, it's just, and I thought they needed, you know, but.
One thing y'all do it, Jeff, and I think you may have started, but at our church, we, we'll say at night, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, where someone's been there and looked at the premises and put a little stuff on there. And the thing about the people at church, they see it, they appreciate it. And so, I mean, I know that they may be doing it anyway, but to leave something to know that they are there, to make them feel more secure, so it's on there.
We're doing that all over the county.
I knew you were.
Sometimes they're real busy and they, they don't have that time to maybe hit it to the point we want them to, but, but they do, but I appreciate them.
Well, getting, I mean, getting out of the vehicle, you know, walking around, looking around, and it's, we, it's appreciated that y'all do that.
It does, and it's, and it, they, that means throughout the county.
Yeah. Anything? All right, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Now, Darrell, you said you had, when you say you have.
I done done.
I love that you'll do it again.
I don't need to.
All right. Jeremy?
Appreciate what everybody does. Hopefully we'll make it another year.
I think so. Appreciate it. Mr. Ricky?
Something that has been bothering me about the budget over the years was the rainy day funding. I, I thought that it was low. I thought it was between four and five. But to find out that it's where it is supposed to be, that, that's good to hear.
It is.
I'm, I'm surprised by that. I'm glad Davenport came and did their presentation. J.C., Sheriff, it's good to see you here. And I'll hurry and tell you a quick story. The first school shooting out west, and I can't remember the name of the place now, wherever it was, call mine. Times News called me, and they said, "What will you eventually have to do?" And, and I mentioned police in schools, and I mentioned locked doors, and the quote to me from all my colleagues was, "If a principal can't handle the school by themselves, they don't need to be there." Well, I've been in a school by myself, and I'm so glad that you've got SROs in every school now. That's great. It takes a load off, somebody's there with a gun, and appreciate you.
Yep, me too. All right, Ms. Ed.
I don't have anything today.
Ms. Addit?
Just want to thank the staff and all the folks here that, you know, does such a good job, such an amazing job behind the scenes that not everybody gets the opportunity to see that. And I guess that's all.
All right, thank you, ma'am. The only I want to mention is our finances, and Darrell will remember this too. There was a time when we had to get a revenue anticipation loan. We didn't have enough money to get through to January till November, ten or twenty, if taxes are due. So, you know, we're, y'all doing this, you're, you're doing a great job with our finances, and, but we've not done that. We all had to do it one time, I think, to the cause, you know, we didn't have enough revenue we thought to get us through the new tax season began. So again, hats off to you all. You heard the report there from Kyle from Davenport, and so they, you know, AAA bond rating, all that is so important, and our debt service is not nothing like a lot of other counties. And I know like Bristol, they have fifteen thousand population, their debt was like a hundred million dollars or something. So we're nothing like that, and I just, I really appreciate what's going on and how that you worked, made this work to keep us in good shape with our finances, and, and so anyway, hopefully this will continue to be fit to operate the county as efficiently as we possibly can. Hats off to you. Thank you, Freedom, and Kathy knows, she was here too, and we struggled a lot. You know, it wasn't just the finance that we struggled, but we, but we come through it, and thank you all for doing what you do. You appreciate everybody. Nothing else? Anyone? Next meeting is, what?
April fifth.
April fifth, don't have to, April fifth. See everybody back then. Thank you all for serving the budget committee. Y'all be busy, I'm sure, so with that, we return to meeting.